The school committee meeting for Monday, April 25th, 2016. A little before 5 o'clock. We had a little bit of technical difficulty, so we have started the meeting. We'll give you a quick overview of what we've gone through so far. We did hold our school choice public hearing just a little while ago. There was no one in the audience to provide a comment to that during the hearing, and the school committee subsequently voted to add a single slot within next year's kindergarten to the school choice with preference given to siblings of existing school choice students. So that was voted and approved unanimously by the committee. We've also reviewed our minutes and correspondence of the new contract for our legal counsel, which will be on the agenda for discussion and vote in May. So I think that brings us pretty close to where we were. In the audience with us today, we have Andrew Clausen, who's a first grade teacher here at the Denit, and I'm sorry.
Jack.
And Jack Gaher is here as well. So we'll jump into it. Next up would be new business. Under that, I just wanted to talk briefly with the committee about town meeting, which is coming up on the 18th and possibly the 19th, we'll see, of May. You know, the budget that we have that's presented has been well received by FinCom. It is a very, very strong budget and very trim, as we say. Very minor increase overall to that. I just want to get, you know, the committee's sort of thoughts of whether we want to, as part of the process, that's always considered under Article 4, which is sort of the rundown, going through all of the money, sort of in the larger budget. Whether we do want to take the opportunity to speak to the budget at all, or whether we want to see if there are any holds and folks want to speak to it, and then we get up to speak to it. So we get an idea of, you know, because we could hold it and then get up and speak to it, remove it, but it's a little more, we typically do that with, you know, a separate warrant article. So I didn't know if there was a strict preference either from the committee or Peter from you on that. I think it speaks for itself, and certainly if we need to speak to it, I think we will be prepared to do so. Okay. And then the other piece for town meeting is that we have warrant article that we'd submitted for security. I was going to ask the police chief to be ready to speak to that, since it was at his recommendation that we have gone forward and put this article together. And then, Jason, I don't know if you or I should be perhaps available to, you know, we would move it, we can talk later about who wants to move the article and sort of speak generally to it, invite the police chief up.
Absolutely.
Does that make sense?
I'll post the meeting for school committee.
That would be great.
So you needed to meet.
Yeah, and I guess I would post it for both nights.
Okay.
So it'll be 7:00 PM. Remember, we post it for 6:30 in case we want to discuss it ahead of time. We post it for 6:30 at the Denit Elementary for both evenings, the 18th and the 19th. This is a, folks in the public haven't heard yet, this is a rather jam-packed warrant due to the fact that there's 10 citizens petitions on it, which will require some discussion or not. We'll see what happens, you can go either way. But if there's some discussion, and depending on where they're located in the warrant, or when they actually get taken up for discussion, could push things to the second night. So I think it's probably more likely that we would be done with the school committee the first night. The only thing I can say probably is that it's highly likely is that we'll be done with the budget the first night.
Right.
And that is, we always go back to that following special town meeting that happens at 8:00. So it will be, this is going to be one of those meetings probably not to miss, so folks, please join us there, and let's fill up the seats. I don't have any other new business from anyone else. Unfinished business, water. I'm going to slurp. We had some excitement a couple of weeks ago on social media regarding Denit water quality and so on and so forth. All spurred on because, in my opinion, Boston Globe erroneously reporting facts without understanding them. There are some issues with a few schools around the state, legitimate issues and legitimate things to report on. However, our errant test in August regarding lead in the water therefore got swept up into this story with a single mention, and a gentleman from a neighboring town posted that up onto social media with lots of hyperbole and questions about how this could happen and how did nobody know and so on and so forth. So, you know, social media is a very valuable tool to provide information around, but like any good tool, it can work out really well or it can be a bit of a pain, shall we say. Right? I mean, if you use your chop saw to cut lumber, that's great. If you cut your finger, it hurts. So both ways it goes. I think the discussion overall ended up being, you know, pretty positive, albeit a fair amount of work for a number of people to make sure that the right stuff got out there. And it is. So just to sort of level set, recent testing of the water at the Denit has no lead issues. We are in compliance with Department of Environmental Protection's requests for what we need to do with our water. We have communicated with all of the families at the Denit about what is going on, and we are actively engaged in getting the plan put together so that we can go out to bid for a water treatment, water treatment equipment here, to have a proper system at the Denit to not only remediate any distant situations, but to make the water here good quality. So that's where we are, and those are the facts. I did offer, and we are a public board, so we have to be very careful what we do on social media because of what the attorney general thinks is a public open meeting. And as a result, I did post up here that if folks had any concerns, they were more than welcome to attend the meeting tonight, which they have not. So I think they do not have concerns at this point. So what I'd like to do now is sort of turn it over. Peter, if you wanted to give a quick update from our consultant. There's been some meaningful movement this week, and I also, when you're sort of done summarizing this, and I also spoke with him late this afternoon as well to sort of make sure that things were moving.
Great. So we did hear from Mr. Keedon over April vacation. I'm going to summarize, this is a very lengthy, very wordy email. He met with Mass DEP on Thursday, April 14th, to discuss the preliminary design proposal letter and attachments which he sent, he sent to us on Thursday morning. He felt the meeting was very productive. Folks from the DEP agreed with the general design concepts and agreed that a pilot plant was not necessary because the green sand treatment operation was well established and known to be effective. Couple of things that popped up from that conversation. Mr. Gould, Mr. Johnson from DEP were brought to the meeting to address the methods available for handling the disposal of backwashed water and residuals from the backwash, and they discussed three options. Backwash discharge to the existing Title V subsurface sewage disposal system, then there were a couple bullet points about what might be good about that, what might not be good about that. They discussed backwash disposal by a separate subsurface leaching system to be permitted by either a groundwater discharge permit or an underground injection control permit. Thirdly, backwash disposal by pre-treatment in a line sedimentation basin followed by disposal of the supernatant in a small surface infiltration basin. The settled iron manganese salt would be removed periodically from the sedimentation basin and disposed as a solid waste. Garrett also went on to say that he had researched each one of these systems. He seems to feel that he will continue with the final design and plans to, expect to be ready to submit them by the end of the week. The detail that he got into is well above what I'm capable of fully understanding. It's not quite my field.
I think you need to be in the field to understand all things to us. I did speak with him this afternoon, and he said he is working on the plan and does hope to have it by the end of the week. I did ask about discharge piece that was brought up and whether he thought that that would have significant impact on the proposed solution from budget perspective. He didn't think it was going to be a significant issue, and that based on, you know, the other group of DEP that's working on this, that with their recommendations, where they seem to be heading, that it's going to really not be too big of an issue at all. But he said he was on track for this week, which is good. I mean, we've had some delays here, which is probably not ideal, but when I did speak with him prior to this call, I did reiterate sort of the committee's concerns with that, and that we are, you know, we would really like to have this installed and ready to go for September, but that was, and that with, you know, having to follow state procurement practices and everything like that, we will have to go out to bid, and then we have to select bids and go from there and then get, actually get the people on site. So that takes some time, whether we would like it or not. It's certainly well within the types of money and the amount of money we would have to use that would require that, so we have to follow those processes. And then, you know, to our friends out there in living rooms, you know, if you have any questions regarding what's going on with that, you know, certainly please feel free to, you know, attend our next meeting, or reach out to whoever in the school committee or to Mr. Vinícius to make sure that you have the facts that you need to have. Any other comments from? All right. Thank you, Peter. You're welcome. I guess breakfast program, school lunch, all at once.
After our last meeting, we spoke about trying out those new trays that we were interested in, and I reached out to Pam Taylor and Dave Ziole. Pam did a test before school vacation week. She made a great choice on one of the more difficult potential foods for the trays, and they performed very nicely, spaghetti, one that tends to have a bit of sauce and certainly has the potential to, put it through a test, let's just say, a tray. She thought the trays were fine, there was not seepage through the trays, the kids seemed to appreciate the trays, there were no issues, quote unquote, "They worked well." The kids were very receptive to them. She used them on a day she served spaghetti, and it served up well to the soaking infecter. So she was supportive of that, she thought it would be a great idea. She did want to let us know that the quote that we gave in terms of the cost would only be good for this school year, and so there may be a bit of an increase next year, which would be normal for anything that we purchase in terms of it. But the trays originally, she thought she might have said they were recyclable. That's incorrect. The package actually says they're compostable and biodegradable, which actually is probably better, which means we won't have to try to scrape and clean and stack, and that just sounds messy from the get-go. So that actually might be better. So I just wanted to give you that update on the trays. I believe she's going to give it another try this week, but she did want to at least keep us in the loop that on their initial test, they performed well. So at this point, if that's something that the school committee would like us to move forward with, I can report again in May after the second test, but they do look like they will work.
They will know it again today, Joy.
Oh, they do go out today?
Yes.
What did we have today for lunch?
I believe they're going to do it all week.
Oh, okay.
Boy, I remember, I brought my lunch today.
Okay.
Soup and grilled cheese.
Ah!
Excellent.
Very good, nice.
My daughter came home after the first run-through, and this is proof that modeling is the best form of education. She told me that the Denit was going green.
Oh, there are.
And I didn't even know that she realized styrofoam wasn't green.
Oh, nice, excellent.
And she said, well, mom never gets her coffee in styrofoam, she always asks for a latte. So I guess that's how she knows.
Yeah, there we go.
But I appreciate the effort being made by the school in embracing the fact that it might not be what the staff might want to be putting out, but knowing that it's in the best interest of the kids, educationally and also health-wise. So I appreciate the effort, thank you.
And so, yeah, so we can hear back next time.
Sure. We can make a final decision. Perfect, excellent. We'll leave it on the agenda.
Great.
Thank you, Pam.
Okay, down to standing committees. Administrative review?
You're at the meeting.
Well, actually, we talked about.
For Unit 31. Yes, we, the Unit 31 met, and it was for Joyce's review, and everybody agreed how great it's been to work with you, and to be present with you, it's been a pleasure, and we all accepted it, and look forward to continuing our relationship.
Thank you.
I would love to have been there, but I was here learning about Boys Night Out here.
Priorities.
Yes, as for the places that, and that was, I will say, just as an aside, since that derailed the conversation, you know, that was a great program, and I think, you know, well-placed, and the boys did a good job of keeping the snickering to a reasonable amount. I'm not going to say minimum, because it wasn't a minimum. And I heard equally good things for the.
I was at the girls', and again, Chloe Anne and Susan Day are just fantastic at that. It's so sad that this was Susan Day's last year, because she's been just amazing, she's amazing.
Great energy.
She's amazing, just with the girls and everything, Chloe Anne as well. It was nice this year to have tea, because it's always been a mother-daughter tea, but no, I was here three years ago, there was no tea, but there was teas, and that was very exciting for the fifth graders as well. But again, snickering kept to a minimum and a lot of, oh my god, mom, but, you know, Susan Day is just as low as Chloe Anne's, phenomenal, I can just agree.
And so, to that end, too, Mark Eubanks did it for the boys, and did a really nice job, and I just think overall, it was just the right amount to make sure that discussion was had without turning it into a spectacle. Good.
John, in fact, and also the participation in Joyce's review was high, considering the numbers they gave us when we started. I wasn't here last year, but I think they said it was like four or five people.
It was.
The last time, so.
Yeah. It was 14 out of 24, I think.
Although I found the input was easier to give this time, because I remember I got one for John, right when I came on, I'm kind of like, well, I can't. But even just trying to look through it to figure out what to fill out was sort of like, ah, you know, intimidating. So it was easy to give the feedback, and, you know, I'm glad we had high participation. It's important.
Thank you.
Negotiations, we don't really have anything else to report on that. We'll have some discussion, executive session, but we're pretty much wrapped, getting close to being wrapped up there. Union 31, I think we just.
So did I.
Two. PAC?
PAC actually has a board of directors meeting this Wednesday, also a board of trustee meeting. It's a biannual event. Anyone wants to attend, you're more than welcome. Interesting news at the PAC is we've started to develop our next year's fiscal budget, which is an extremely interesting process and very unlike a public school's budget. I'm actually on the subcommittee, and it's an educational experience, to say the least.
We actually just received an M.A.N.C. update that did have a couple of new policies on there. I was sad to see that, which means we'll need to have some policy meetings. However, we are currently in the process, because all four committees will meet together once we elect a new chair and elect a new board, so it may not be till next fall or late summer when we actually have an opportunity to meet to bring those on board, because we do have several, all of our committees have some new members or some positions available.
Okay. Capital improvement?
Just the camp system.
Right, yep, and we spoke to that earlier. Legislative?
Nothing, Bert needs to point.
There's plenty of money for everyone.
We don't need the money.
All right. Mr. Vinícius, you are up.
Excellent, thank you. If you take a look at the principal's report for the month of April, we are down one student from last month. Total enrollment was 221 students, and if you look at the important dates, we have a lot happening this month. April 26th through the 28th, we'll have grades four and five doing their park testing for ELA, English Language Arts. May 2nd, we have our citizen of the month assembly at 2:00. May 3rd, we have park testing for grade six for ELA, and they also go on the 4th and the 5th as well. In addition to that happening, kindergartners are taking a field trip to the aquarium. May 6th, we have citizen of the month pizza luncheon. Then the 10th through the 12th, grade three will be doing their ELA park testing. The night of the 12th, we have a spring concert, one during the day at 1:30 and 7:00 PM. Then our fifth graders do still have to take a portion of the MCAS, they have to take the grade five science portion of the MCAS. Then, May 17th through the 19th, grades three and six have their park math testing. Now, May 20th is also grade three math. May 23rd, we have our school committee meeting, and I know it looks like a ton of park testing, and one of the things that we discussed earlier is they're much more defined lengths of time. With MCAS, we would have students that would be literally three, four hours on one exam. This is a very finite time. I believe the first few ELA sessions are 90 minutes. We get into the math as approximately 60 minutes, and there's one session, I'm not remembering which grade that would impact, it would be like 110 minutes.
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade, okay. So it looks like a lot on the calendar, yes, it is certainly a large undertaking, but the overall time that kids are going to be sitting with a test in front of them is probably less than it would have been with MCAS. But it does look like a lot when you just look at it all at once like this.
Can we, next school committee meeting, just get some feedback as to how that went?
Absolutely.
Because I know this is our first year that we'll be taking it in the classroom.
Correct. I could speak to that a little bit, John. We did infrastructure tests here in the building.
Yep.
The only things that really went wrong, actually, I didn't say this aloud, was a little bit of human error. And we had, our tech staff was here onsite, they set up a special request line or hotline so that if there were any park issues, there was somebody in this building, and they were reading what the issue was. And the handful things that happened, like we noticed with our third grade Chromebooks, a lot of the kids, we didn't know this until we learned it, they hadn't been shutting them down, they were just closing them when they were done with them, and we found that then they weren't getting proper updates, they weren't getting certain things that they need. So again, from a technology standpoint, we were perfect, and we had multiple grade levels going at the same time. So I think the positioning of where we're actually taking the tests and having suitable infrastructure, it's going to be, it's going to be very smooth.
So you tasked, when they were doing the pre-test work for the students to get comfortable, we were also testing the infrastructure.
Absolutely.
That's excellent.
Yep.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any Casa updates?
So we spoke about mother-daughter tea and father-daughter night out, or whatever it was. Square One Art went out, and I think those are coming back, and that's one of my favorites. The basketball court was resurfaced, and then an upcoming staff luncheon.
Great, busy time. Who's coming?
We're three-quarters of the way through the year, and our financial is, our budget has held up pretty well, too. We have two that's been going on throughout the year. There were a couple of new deficits I wanted to bring to your attention as the highlight. The first one is on page four of the detail, at the top of the page. This is our custodial supply account. We've run into, there are a few items that the prices have really increased this year, but this is what we'll need together the end of the year, so this really shouldn't change much from what we're seeing right now. And then on page five of the detail, on the bottom of the page, on the special education, there is a telephone account that's gone into a deficit. One of the things that I've talked about is we have the E-rate reimbursement that we get towards our telecommunication costs. That has been falling off quicker than we had anticipated, the reimbursement. So from Denit Elementary, their telephone account is not in a deficit yet, because it's a rural community, they're staggering the decline of the reimbursement, whereas this sheer cost piece is coming from Silver Lake, it gets charged due from Silver Lake's budget, and at Silver Lake, we're experiencing that decrease in a quicker rate. So we're seeing a deficit here, and it may rise slightly as we get to the end of the year, but it's a deficit of $55.04. The rest of the category should be able to absorb that. The only thing I wanted to bring to your attention is a deficit we had last month that our substitute account is continuing to grow. We've had some staff out on leave, and we should see a corresponding surplus in the teaching line to compensate for that. And the only other deficit in the financial is on at the very end, our special education out-of-district transportation account, and that's been pretty consistent throughout the year. It's a deficit of $6,500, and that's what we expect to be for the end of the year. On the very last page, the very last account, the out-of-district vocational account, the deficit that we're seeing there is saying 56,000, it's actually closer to 60. We had an invoice that was misposted that we didn't notice until just before the meeting. So that balance is closer, is just over $60,000. And I just wanted to mention that that'll be talented to use some of those funds at town meeting this year.
Special.
At special town meeting, yes, and we have confirmed the balance of them.
And we feel comfortable, Kristin, that any of the deficits will be easily filled with offsets in there?
They should each be filled with offsets within their own categories, yep, so it shouldn't even, so that's surplus balance, out-of-district vocational should stand, and the town should be able to use those funds without.
Forty days left in this school year, well done.
Let's see. Are there any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Representatives from Department of Elementary and Secondary Education are here with us for the month. We are so fortunate, reviewing our special ed programs and English language learning programs. They were in Plimpton for the first week in April. They conducted interviews and observations with staff and families, and all staff and families that were involved were notified ahead of time. This is their last week with us, they're in Kingston, and we have our exit interview with them on Thursday, so wish us luck. The science curriculum update, our curriculum coordinator, Melissa Farrell, has been working with teachers in Greets K through 5 for the past year on reviewing materials from various publishers to adopt a new science curriculum resource. A final survey was given to those teachers over the past two weeks. Information was gathered from all 28 teachers who completed the science curriculum piloting process. 27 out of 28 recommended the adoption of interactive science with the adoption of a literacy component and the reorganization of science materials for alignment with the new frameworks. At the last school committee meeting, the materials were available for viewing. However, if you have any other questions, please feel free to contact me at any time. Our sleep needs update, our sleep needs subcommittee met last week, or two weeks ago, to finalize our survey to families. We're exploring the possibility of changing the start times of schools so that students at the secondary level have a later start time. We're anticipating that the survey will be live from this Wednesday, April 27th, until May 8th, which is Friday. The survey will give staff, families, and community members the opportunity to provide feedback on possible start times for all schools, including an option to not change at all. We're really looking for input and feedback. There will be a Blackboard Connect message sent out to families with a link to the survey. So we're really asking for everyone to participate in that survey. The community's feedback is extremely important to us.
And does the survey sort of explain what, if you're, I mean, because it's one thing to just ask, maybe if you're figuring this or this, but if you're figuring this, this would have these consequences, and then this, this would have, because there's a ripple effect.
Right.
Because we share the buses.
Right. So we're sharing out three options, and it does have the start and end times for each option. The third option, however, is no change at all, so the other two options are, actually have start and end times to them for the secondary and the elementary levels, approximate start times.
Keeping the same, same number of buses.
Yes, yes.
So theoretically, there wouldn't be a financial impact to the transportation.
Correct.
From a. Kristi, will there be a link on the websites as well?
There will be, and we're also looking at connecting with some literature on why the survey is about and why we've been discussing this possibility.
Is there a reminder of going out to, with the school, with the children when they go home, to remind the parents that the survey is coming, or is it?
There will be a Blackboard Connect message.
There will be a Blackboard Connect message, and in there, if a teacher, I mean, anyone in the community would like a hard copy of it, they can contact the school, and we will have that available for them. Yeah. Okay. I, I, my opinion is if, if you want people to participate in the survey, that, that something should go home. Like a notice? I think so. With everything that everybody has going on, I mean, I don't know.
And don't send it on the front.
This is how I think. We have tons of stuff stocked in the fridge, you know what I mean? What we got going on. The only problem we would have is we're sending it school-wide, so we're talking 4,000 pieces of paper. If we were to do it for Denit and not for the other buildings, I'm not sure how that might be viewed. So when, so when does the survey close?
It closes on May 8th.
So then, after May 8th, we'll be able to see the, the numbers?
Yes.
So if the numbers come back, do we have a goal where we want to be at? Is there a percentage we want to, we want to be at so we know that we're getting participation rate?
Participation rate.
Right.
Yeah. The survey return rate.
So we're, we're opening the survey, we're also sending it to the selectmen. We would like to hear from not just people that are in relation to the school, but also community members. So we're looking at, at trying to get a number for feedback to see if any of the options are something that the subcommittee would recommend to school committees. Just to note that the school committees, all four school committees will need to accept this in order to make it a possibility, or in order to make it actually happen. It has to be unanimous with all four school, all four school committees need to approve it. We can't have just one not approving it.
Is that someone who likes research? The null is also important. If we get a bunch of people who vote or don't vote for one of the options, we can at least wash that one off the table and then look at the ones that still remain? That's just as important as which one gets the most votes sometimes?
Yeah, no, no.
We're looking to see if there's even an interest. You know, if there, if there's no interest in changing the times, then that will be noted as well. So it's, that's something that's really important to us. We've, we've been talking a lot at the subcommittee about the possibilities and the benefits. You know, the science is out there that says it's more beneficial for, for student, students that are older at the secondary level to actually start later than what we currently have. However, it is a ripple effect. It does affect all the communities and all the, all the families. So we're, we, it's really important to us to look at the community, look to the community to see if there is an interest. And if there isn't an interest, then that's something that we need to note and report back to the school committees as well.
So keep a watch out for the Blackboard Connect message, but you can also, if you not part of that, then you can also go to the school websites after Wednesday or so.
Yes.
And so that should be up there, then I guess that's what, almost two weeks, and it's up.
Yeah.
So look forward for your response.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have before you the 2016, 2017 school calendar, and I gave this out, I believe, last month. There's just a couple of changes on it from previous years. We now have some very nice squares, which represent a day off of school for parents. It's a lot easier to see that visually. The circles are half-days for the students, just to give you a key. I think we went through all of dates. If I remember correctly, we may not have mentioned when the spring half-day would be. We now have some more definitive information on when MCAS 2.0 will be next year. And so we believe that we could hold the half-professional day on March 17th, St. Patrick's Day. So we're going to be looking for the luck of the Irish and have a great day for that. So that will be a half-day on Friday, March 17th, which will begin a nice, a little bit longer weekend for you. Assuming we have no snow days, which I assume this year, and I was otherwise informed that that wasn't going to work, will be ending next year on June 14th. So hopefully we won't get too many snow days next year. The most important thing to remember next year, though, and I want to say again, is November 8th is voting day. In two of our districts, the schools are the voting place, so we cannot hold school on the election day, November 8th. I know you've probably seen a couple of commercials about the presidential election, so we anticipate there being quite a turnout for that. So on Tuesday, November 8th, there will be no school. That will be a very odd week, because Veterans Day falls on Friday, November 11th, so that there will be two days off school during that week. So it will be kind of an unusual week for us. Other than that, if you have no questions or concerns, I'd like to ask you to vote this. The reason why it's remaining draft is we need to have all of our school committees voted on who the chairs are, and that doesn't usually happen until the end of May. So that's when we'll make it more official. But if, once we have all the committees and all the other schools have voted on it, we'll be able to get this up and posted on the websites, give parents some ideas of when the, when the vacations will be for next year.
Make a motion? Make a motion to accept the 2016, 2017 school calendar in its draft form with any updates that need to be made.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. You have in your packet copies of the, of the Chapter 70 letter and the charter school letters that were sent out. I just wanted you to have those for your records. You may remember, the school committee voted those as a whole. Appreciate your willingness to do that. I think it's important for our school committees to develop a bit of a political voice. So as we have additional information on items, I'll make sure to try to bring those forward to you for your consideration. We already did our school choice vote. So the last thing that we have is the FY '17 budget. You may remember last month, we mentioned that we had two extra slots for out-of-district vocational education, and since it was the Monday before it closed, I think there were three or four days, we felt pretty confident if we left one space, we should be safe. And you voted a budget last month that was $23,000 less in that category. We made it to April 1st with no other children applying, so, which is great news for the town of Kingston. So now we are able to have for out-of-district vocational education, a reduction to $225,000, which is a good news for the town. It is an overall reduction in that category of almost 20%, 19.9%. And it's town, it's money that I'm sure the town would be very happy to use. We have already voted the regular day budget and the out-of-district special education budget. However, I would ask that we vote the new number for out-of-district vocational education. The students can no longer apply legally, they only have until April 1st. So we're confident that this number should be correct.
And I guess the, this is one of those points, just to remind folks, is that, you know, that's this number for this year.
Correct. Absolutely.
And that next year, it could go up, just the special ed could go up a bit.
Right.
And we're very fortunate this year that we ended up with reductions, well, first of all, with a very fiscally responsible overall school budget with only a 1.4% increase, which is very, very small, considering that, you know, that everything else goes up in price. And then we end up with the reductions in special ed and out-of-district vocational with, ending up with a budget compared to last year that's down, down 2.69. I think we should be very happy and proud of that, but just remember, I mean, it doesn't always go down.
Right.
So with that from the superintendent, I'd like to make a motion that the Plimpton School Committee approved the 2016, 2017 elementary school out-of-district vocational education budget of $225,000.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye.
Who's making the second? Thank you.
So I think that's it for regular meeting.
Thank you.
So we need a motion, we have to have a brief executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn from regular session to enter into executive, not to return.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening and see you in May.